This meeting has been called to order. We have a presence of a quorum and the meeting has been called duly called and the notice of the meeting has been posted in the time and manner required. First up on our agenda is continuous improvement, advanced placement dual credit completion update.
Yeah, we're pleased to bring to the board and highlight the successes and challenges that we were having in AP and dual credit. This is a big part of our accountability system. I think it probably played a big role in the rating that we received this last year. And we've had success there and continue to have success and growth and we're very pleased to present this to the board today. We have with us Gary Brown, Executive Director of College and Career. Mr. Brown, your deal?
President Washman and Dr. Crawford, trustees, I appreciate the opportunity to share some information on our AP and dual credit program, specifically as it relates to the continuous improvement student outcome goal two, progress measure two. The specific goal, and this was adjusted and modified last year to take into account the CCMR criteria that the state has that's been around now for a couple of years. The baseline that we looked at last year on the 2018 Texas Academic Performance Report was a little less than 50% of our graduates. And I would point out as we move into these numbers, that we're going to be back and forth between lag data and previous graduating classes into present data and current students that are enrolled in courses. This baseline data in 2018 was actually referring to the class of 2017. So when we look at the year one target of the 2019 TAPER that's released here in November, that is actually reflecting back 16 months to the class of 2018 graduates. The students that we had graduate from John Tyler Early College and Robert E. Lee four months ago, they will actually be reflected in this data that comes out in the TAPER the following year. So just to kind of keep perspective. So here's how far you get down that list, and this is why I think this is important, that the year three target versus 2021 TAPER, those are the current seniors. They're in classes now at seniors, early college at John Tyler, parent technology center at Robert E. Lee that will be impacting that near 60% goal CCMR ready. The three areas that you're familiar with, that we've all become very familiar with, college readiness, career readiness, military readiness. This specific progress monitoring 2.2 speaks to the students who score three or higher on an AP exam, the students who earn three or more hours of college credit in a math or a language arts class. And then cumulatively, we would take into account technical credit, dual credit, and social studies and sciences to combine nine hours of college credit would be one of the criteria that would be addressed. You've hopefully had an opportunity to look through the data, so I won't go through that individually, but you can see where things stand. This is, these are the numbers from the last school year. So it would include the fall 2018 semester and the spring 2019 semester. That would just cumulative data for the entire district. And that bottom line going across, you can see that we had 3,180 college courses taken, dual credit courses taken, with a little over 3,000 of those courses where students earned the credit in the course. And one thing that's a significant gain is the percentage of the students that earned the credit that took the course. That number's up.
Question. So what is the difference? You take the course, they some earn the credit. Those who don't earn the credit, what have they done?
It's their grade. If they don't meet the standard at Tyler Junior College to have a transcript that has passing grade, then they're going to receive either an F or a withdrawal with F.
Are they allowed an opportunity to retake?
In the dual credit courses, because they follow the Tyler Junior College grading policies and procedures, all of their policies and procedures. That's a professor by professor, and they understand that in the syllabi that they receive at the beginning. In some situations, yes. The passing percentage, I would point out, about Tyler Junior College and Tyler ISD, there's been a concerted effort to provide additional academic supports for students. And I think that's why, just looking at some of the increases, the number of courses, the participation number is up, but the earned credit number is up even more.
Is that true?
And that's relative to the fact that we have students being more successful. So it gets back into that participation versus performance, quantity versus quality, that we have students, more students being successful in our dual credit classes. And this is last year's data. The, this is looking at both of the AP and the dual credit courses, and this is looking at this year's data. This is where our students are in the third week of school. Now, I had to pull these numbers last week in preparation for the board report, but I just checked them today and they're very similar. So I don't, there's not going to be much fluctuation. This is a snapshot looking back two years ago into the fall of 2017 where we stood at this point in the fall, AP 909 students in 484 dual credit. You can see that the gradual increase. I would point out, and we've seen this trend, it's kind of gone up and back and forth, but our dual credit numbers are just steadily climbing. More and more students and parents are choosing to take this route, and it really has not had a significant impact on the AP numbers. Even from two years ago to where we are now, we still have more students taking AP classes. As far as the where this is a comparison as a whole, we have 73 more students, high school students, taking AP dual credit courses this year than last year when you look at the combined two. Just it's still, it's still, it's beginning to plateau, I won't say plateau, it's starting to level off a little bit as these numbers have grown, but they are still increasing. The new courses, just to kind of take a look at maybe where some of those new students are, or classes they're taking. AP Seminar is a new course we've added this year that it's similar to the IB Theory of Knowledge class. It's very foundational. Students submit portfolios. It's foundational for the AP Research Course that we're going to add next year. And basically, the research has borne out through College Board and other districts that have implemented this course, that they see not only this has an opportunity to score three or higher, but they also see that the other coursework, the grades increase because students are delving deeper into what is learning, what is it's hack to understand the concepts that are dealing with. So this, we're excited to add this course and the dual credit. These are three new dual credit offerings. We've had AP Biology previously. We had not offered a dual credit Biology. So for the first year, we have 1408 and 1409 here. Culinary Arts is a technical credit class where our teacher, our chef, is serving as both the high school CTC teacher as well as a TJC culinary arts professor. Students are earning dual credit in those classes. And then the firefighter, which we started last year, we've now added the dual credit component. So a junior can take junior classes. We spread that 12-week firefighting module where they go every day, all day, over two years. So this, this group of juniors in the class over the course of the next two years, they will be able to graduate when they turn 18 with the firefighter certification and the dual credit.
Kudos to Chief Kobel for getting excited about that program. We've, we've always put stuff out there with our community partners, our city partners, and it really takes it two sides. We can get excited about something, but maybe they don't get excited about it. They've been excited about this one. So he's a good dude. I like him.
It's been a good process working. Same thing with the new chef at TJC, also the culinary. There are a lot of excitement surrounding what could happen here.
So these courses are actually equivalent with the rigor of college?
They're college courses.
Okay.
Equivalent, they are. The rigor's there. They're earning the credit and they're achieving the certifications. Exact same modules in the firefighter certification that they would take in the 12-week firefighter course. That's type of requirement, that's their flexibility. The timelines, I just wanted to mention this, this is in the, once again, in the current year with current students. The AP process has moved up. Previously, we had gone through the process of ordering AP exams, paying for AP exams. Everything was backloaded in the spring in preparation for my testing. College Board, and they started this process two years ago, they made the move to where all AP exams were ordered in the fall, paid for in the fall, students are locked in early. And of course, College Board is known to where they do a lot of research. Their research that they, in pilot states and schools, have shown that the AP exam scores actually increase when this occurs because students make a commitment early. They commit early on in the fall that I am going to take the test, I am going to be assessed. And so there's a higher level of commitment on the part of students.
How much is the exam?
There are some state subsidies that go into it. Our part, $65 per exam is what the students pay. A free introduced student pays $15 per exam. We've been fortunate, and I think the plan is still in place to maintain this, that there's a reimbursement opportunity. So a student scores a five on an AP exam can get that full $65 back. So they're basically taking the exam and earning the credit for free. A four scores $40 and down to even a three. So a free introduced student can get the full price back. But that's an adjustment in the timeline. We're in the process of doing that now. A big adjustment that's just recently taken place, taken place is the dual credit. It's as far back as we've been doing dual credit. The spring and the summer, basically, we're not, that's not when we did enrollment, registration, but everything was pushed back when TJC made the move to the 16-week semester, which is good because it equates to what other universities are doing. So they start, basically, started their classes last week. Our students then had to be applying online, be accepted to TJC, they had to be registered for courses, they had to make payments or payment arrangements. Classes started last Monday, well, Monday, prior August 26th. So that's been, caught a few, you know, there's a, it's always when you make a change like that, there are some adjustments. I think we're in really good shape right now. You saw the numbers, our numbers are actually up.
We assist them with the registration process?
Is it what?
Do we assist them with the registration?
We do. A lot of it, because we're the ones that have the face-to-face opportunities with our students. So we're handling a lot of the, but they ultimately goes into their system and they're the ones that have to approve the applications and get the registrations all in place. These are the two new things as far as timelines.
That is information. You pay the regular amount for credit hour?
It is reduced. The dual credit rate for TJC industry students is $175 per course. The free introduced students, our MOU says that we split the cost, Tyler ISD and TJC each pay half, and so they do not pay any tuition, nor, and we, Tyler ISD purchases the textbooks for free introduced students.
It's a good deal, Red.
It's great.
I just calculated, Jackson's going to walk out of Lee with 18 hours, and that's, I think we're paying 58 bucks per hour for that. You can't find a better deal. So it's a, very, very excited that we have such a good junior college in our backyard that, you know, that we can work with. So, and they're really helping us out. The, the reduced cost for free and reduced lunch students, then they move into the Promise Program. There's no reason a kid that goes to Tyler ISD school shouldn't be able to finish with an, at least an associate's degree. Any, from all walks of life, whether they're higher income or lower income, it's there and we're getting our kids to, to the trough. I mean, that's, that's, we're getting, we're getting them there. So appreciate Mr. Brown being on top of that.
Man, you'd have not necessarily increased.
It's good for students.
What is, as far as, you know, I know that we've got some room to gain and we have goals to go up 4% every year. Where do you imagine the plateau being? I mean, because at some point-
Sure. It begins to squeeze as you have less room for improvement. Remember, when you start getting in the 60% range of students that are hitting that criteria, I mean, that's your comparison to the state and other districts similar to ours, that puts us very competitive if not behind where they are. I mean, obviously, our goal will always be 100, but realistically, we want to see it continue to improve. I think as you see it approach 60%, 60, six two-thirds, it's going to begin to squeeze. At some point, it will, we've seen it in dual credit and AP enrollment, massive gains two years ago by the hundreds. While we're still growing, it's just the growth is leveling off just a little bit. I guess to expect it.
Well, you know, we'll continue to measure it. What gets measured gets improved, and we have the right person leading that. The right persons, it's not just Gary, but we've got a pretty good system now compared to what we had. I just don't know if we had too many people minding the shop. It was like, you know, if you want to take dual credit, go take it. AP, yeah, this is what my dad did when he was going through school. It's strategy now, and so, and it's culture. And I think that that's going to continue to improve. I don't know if the numbers are going to keep doing that. We will, as a board and administration, need to go back and revisit goals, not just these, but the other ones as well, because the state, as part of House Bill 3 is requiring that. And so it will, we'll, we'll go through that process here within the next year, not just with Gary's stuff, but with reading and even mathematics now. The commissioner wanted that put in a statute, and we will certainly work on that as well. But this has been a big push for us. And I think CCMR is where you can score. I know this is not part of the topic, but we, we have enacted an ROTC-style program with the National Defense Cadet Corps.
Correct.
Got it right. And we've got 25 or so kids that have started that.
A full class to start up.
So that's-
Numbers are just going to tear up.
Yeah, that's going to help us as well. I think we, I don't know what, how many kids we had enlisted last year, but it felt more. I know feelings aren't always a good way to measure something, but it certainly felt more than, than years past, but it's a good option.
It is a very good option.
For a student.
And one thing, one thing I should have added earlier is that at the regular board meeting in September, and that's why I didn't go as deep into the AP scores, that's another part of this, there's a report on AP scores specifically.
And those look good.
They look good.
Awesome. Good work. So next, we have an enrollment update.
As part of our District of Innovation Plan, we no longer subpoena the state or apply to the state for 22 to 1 waivers. But as part of our DOI plan, we do present to the board an update of what, what our enrollment does look like. And in your packet, we actually have a single sheet that does show our enrollment numbers to where we are up district-wide, approximately almost 250 students. So very appreciative of that.
It's very hard in Austin.
Very powerful thing.
It's hard in Austin, bro.
Kids not living in that attendance. They're graduating out of there, probably some transfers as well, but to other campuses. We're still serving the kiddos that live in that area.
So you all do have data of exactly who is transferring out?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, Constituent Services manages all of that as well. So, good thing is, is the work that this board did a year and a half ago to redraw some boundaries has allowed for us to actually receive some more students. And it's, and in some cases, that is actually, some of this has eliminated some of the work that we did. If you look at that very bottom number with 75 at Jack Elementary, we're now back up to where we were when we redrew the boundaries. So there's a lot of growth on that, that western side. Same thing with Owens as well. So we're, we're, we're growing that way. Jones is actually up 36 kids. Pete's up 48 kids. That might be where some of your kids are coming back from, from Austin, Reverend Mason, because it may not be kids that actually live in that zone that are not going to school at Austin anymore. Maybe kids that are transferring in and going back to their home campus. And we had a lot of transfers out of Pete prior to this year. So I'm hoping Miss Choppa's made a good impression on the community over there. Bell's up 69 kids. That was previously 388.
It's free pay.
Free pay.
We put four free pay.
Yep.
Oh, that bell?
Mm-hmm.
So each school has his one project?
Yes, except for Caldwell.
Except for Caldwell.
High schools are up. Those are some things to pay attention to there as we approach the snapshot deadline in October. We talked about that at the board meeting. So early college, high school, probably three-quarters, if not 70% of their kids are assigned to, are John Tyler zoned kids that choose to go to school there. So if you were to take the amount of kids that are in early college, high school, 70% of them, and throw them back up towards JT, you would see the very balanced enrollment without that program there. So there's a good chance that both of them will be 6A again whenever, whenever we come back for realignment. I don't, it doesn't look like they're going to go back, they'll be back down once they go back up. So the demographers projections, what we had anticipated, it looks like it's kind of coming to fruition with, if we continue a little bit of this 200-student-per-year increase. I don't think it'll be that much, but I do think we'll keep adding. That's what it's looking like. So, middle schools are comfortable. They'll probably receive some emails about quote-unquote busting at the seams. But they're within their thresholds and capacities to be able to hold them right now.
Hubbard being up 70 students.
Yeah, some of those are the zone change that we, that we put to Moore, that Claw, or excuse me, Mr. Lane was allowed to keep a few students that were going to be eighth graders. Well, now that whatever lives in that zone that replenished the kids that just graduated actually go to Hubbard now, if they don't qualify, if they're not accepted into the magnet.
So what is capacity or both?
Over 1,000.
Oh.
440?
Over.
850 or 900?
Three, eight.
Same as Bolton, over 1,000, 1,100. Moore's the same way. But they don't, Brad, whenever they talk about capacity, and I don't know why the state does it this way, or why we do it this way, it's actually just on classroom space. You don't count 60 to 75 kids per, per grade period going to PE or going to band, which are large spaces that hold large amounts of kids. So sometimes when you start talking about quote-unquote capacity, it's not really capacity to run a school, the school days. If you were to just put every kid in one classroom at one time, that's capacity and leave all your bigger spaces unoccupied. I've always had an issue with that. Back to, well, before I even got here, I mean, it's just silly to think that you don't, you don't include the square footage of the entire facility for the population of the campus. But that's the way we do it, because it's comparable to what TEA wants you to do. We do have, other than just enrollment, we do have, because of this growth, we've leveled our classes already. We've actually moved four teachers to where grade levels didn't support having that teacher. We also have hired two new teachers. Tasha, these sticky notes on here indicate-
How many classes?
How many classes are over the 22 to 1?
Yeah, and there's a total at the bottom.
Yeah, there's 39 classes total. There's, Austin has one kindergarten monolingual that's over. Birdwell.
Second.
Second grade monolingual that's over. There's just one of those. Caldwell, one monolingual that's over. That's first grade. Fourth grade, three of their monolinguals are over. Dixie, third grade, one monolingual over. Griffin, one bilingual in first grade over. Two monolinguals, two, two are over. Jack, in first grade, all five of their, all five of their first grades are over. All, all five of their second grades are over, and then two of their third grades are over. That doesn't count fourth and fifth. We don't, we don't look at those, but I know fourth is, we do.
But fourth is fine, but just-
Fourth is fine. They're packed. They can't take anymore. Kindergarten at Orr, they're monolingual, they got three that are over there. Owens, kindergarten has five at Owens that are over.
But there are other grades.
Yeah, so there's a little growth in those younger grades. Bilingual, in third and fourth grade at Pete, you have one class that's over in each of those grades. Ramey, two monolinguals. Two of those classes are over. Three bilinguals at Ramey. Or third grade, one bilingual. Andy Wood.
Over like two, three students for the-
It's low. It's not a lot. And we've got aides in the class.
Yeah. Woods has first and fourth grades that are over. Three, three and, three of Woods' first grades are over.
And one.
And one fourth grade. So, you know, you, we preach being conservative when we budget. The way to not have so many of these is to be a little bit more casual in how you budget. So, but this was a little bit unanticipated as well, wasn't it, Tasha? Well, we saw some of it coming in mid-August with the, with the registration, but we didn't anticipate it would be like this. It's a good, it's a good problem to have.
And one good thing, it is usually with some monolinguals that word.
It's monolingual.
They sure it's all monolingual.
Yep. So we've been able to cover our bilinguals for the most part, but the monolinguals are something that's something that we really have to, y'all give us different direction. If y'all want us to loosen up on how we budget a little bit, we can, but that's a, it's a, it's definitely a balancing act. And finding a teacher in August, we all know the implications of that. Hiring a teacher in August.
But they all have, all those classrooms have aides assistant?
We have aides assistant, yes. Yeah, we haven't stopped that practice.
They would rather have that honestly than have a teacher.
Right.
Unless they get up to 25, 26.
Most of the times, I mean, what I recall on those reports, it was always one or two kids over.
Now, Jack, it's odd, and there's a couple of it's more kids. They would rather have that. Yeah. We'll have a report like that, I think it's in the-
It is. Yep. And things will settle down by then, too. Enrollment by November will be a true indication of where we're at.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on the enrollment update before we move on? Okay, we'll go to our action items. And audit plan for 19 and 20 is up. How are you, Ms. Coker?
I'm doing wonderful, thank you. Good morning, President Washman, board members.
Board members.
In addition to discussing the audit plan, I want to take a moment to publicly confirm independence of the audit function in the district.
Can you speak a little louder?
Yes, ma'am, I sure can. What I was, what I was saying is, in addition to discussing the audit plan, I wanted to publicly confirm that internal audit services is independent of the organization. And annually, I can confirm that with the Audit Committee. That is, independence is key to an objective approach in the audit process, and confirmation is required by the Institute of Internal Auditors. So at our August 22nd Audit Committee meeting, I reviewed risk assessment results and the risk-based draft audit plan with the Audit Committee members, Mr. Martinez, who is our chair, and Reverend Hager. And I really appreciate your service on that, ma'am. Thank you for that. So if you open up to the audit plan, you should have that as a separate part of your package. The audit plan here is October 1st through September 3rd. And this year, on our audit plan, we still devote a considerable amount of hours to new construction auditing. And then, if you'll notice, we have campus and program audits. Those are planned for more middle school and Jack Elementary this year. And then a section for analytics, investigations, and special requests. There is flexibility built into the audit plan. You'll see that even though we have planned for more middle school and Jack Elementary, we do just specifically state campus and program audits. And in the analytical section, special requests, investigations, that is also generic. That gives us the opportunity that if anything comes up within the school year, with recommendations from the Audit Committee, we can make changes if something comes up and we are requested to audit a specific campus or organization. We are planning on, in the follow-up section, to perform 10 follow-ups this year in the audit plan. And then if you'll notice, there's a new section called Audit Function. That would be me, going to be performing a self-assessment of the internal audit function. This is required by the Institute- This is required by the Institute of Internal Auditors, and we'll, we'll be using the Institute of Internal Auditors Quality Assessment Manual, which is to do the self-assessment, and that's what we'll use as the audit program when we go to perform the external review. So those are the major parts of the audit plan. And does anybody have any questions on the audit plan?
I don't know, it, it looked pretty in line with what I'd seen in prior years. Unless Aaron has any nuggets or anything to add to it?
No, I think, uh, mostly all commed with the process and. Yeah, this was an audit plan approved by the committee, and so I'd like to make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes 5-0.
Thank you.
Appreciate everything you do, Jim.
Thank you.
Thanks for presenting.
You're welcome, thank you.
All right, and then next is the new substitute pay rates for 2019, 2020.
Yeah, uh, page eight, you have the actual rates for Class A, Class B, Class C, um, rates of pay. Something we could actually fit in the budget this year. Continue to try to work on that, but as I tell my staff, the way to pay substitutes more is to not have as many of your regular teachers. Absent, so. I encourage all of us to encourage teachers, our teachers that we pay big budget dollars to to come to work every day, and they do, they're, they're good people. So we'll keep working on this, this is in front of you to actually increase their, their pay for this year. It does take board approval to do that, uh, per policy, it's in front of you.
Um, generally, percentage-wise, since we don't have what they're going to, to what they're going to now here, uh, or do we? Am I missing? What, what kind of percentage-wise or dollar amount?
Um, I didn't figure percentage, but it was like.
What was the standard daily?
It was 85, 95, 100, and 10, 5, 5C, 4, 500, I mean, 85, 95.
Ten, generally $10 per day. Okay. Yeah, yeah.
I think that, that every case was, was five.
Okay.
So on a long-term daily rate, if it, was that 100, you said? It went to 110?
It depended, I don't remember, Class C and Class C.
It depends on 10, 10 for, 10 for section two.
Yeah, we just did a 10.
So is that a, that's a, it's on yours, Class C certified, it's 10%, right, for a long term?
Yeah.
A little bit over 10 for.
It is.
Yeah, when you hit that 30, that 30 being.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. Maybe that'll broaden our pool, all these subs.
Running into a few subs, and they said that they're very appreciative, that y'all will be considering this action today.
I'm sure they are.
Chairman. You have a great job, and I move to approve the rate increase for substitute teachers.
Okay, motion to second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, say nay, that's a 5-0. All right, congratulations substitute teachers at Tyler ISD. Okay, um, we do have executive section, session next, I, I think I do want to go and, I think Ms. Mason wanted to discuss one little thing in the executive session. Shouldn't take long.
It's fine, I've got a couple of items to brief y'all on.
Okay, good deal, well, we'll move into executive session now.